Good morning and welcome to the February 23rd, 2022 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman Haney, followed by the pledge. Please take it.
Please bow with me. Dear Lord, thank you for your blessings that you bestowed upon us. Grant us the wisdom to govern as you see fit. Grant us the wisdom to act justly. And grant us the confidence to carry out your will. God, we pray over this council and the staff and that our actions glorify you. We pray that your wisdom and guidance instruct these proceedings. We are humbled to have a voice for the citizens of our great city while knowing that it is not our own doing and not without your allowance. We are blessed with the ability for all seven of us to work together for the common good of Tyler, Texas. Lord, all honor and glory is yours. Amen.
Amen. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with the minutes from January the 12th, 2022, and February the 9th, 2022.
Move to approve both as presented.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, first we have the Essentium, Boba Venus. Thank you, thank you. Now, we have Kenneth Clennard, fire driver, engineer, 20 years of service. By the way, Essentium is a career leader for 20 years of service. So, anyway, Kenneth Clennard, fire driver, 20 years of service. Are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, how about Lance Marshall, fire captain, 20 years of service. And the last but not least, Darryl Gardner, police officer, 25 years of service. And just real quickly, thank you guys for what you've done for the city, your long-term loyalty. That's something we don't see in this day and time too much. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you for what you teach the young employees just about loyalty and mentorship and what you do. We do appreciate you and hope you stick around another 20, 25 years. All right, Kyle, zoning, Z1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We have two items today. First item is a zone change from RMF multifamily residential district to R1B single-family residential. This is located at 708 Wilson Street. This is in City Council District Number Two. The applicant is requesting the zone change to develop a single-family home on the property. This request is consistent with the future land use guide to identify the single-family, single-family attached. All the surrounding properties are generally developed with detached, single-family homes, and that's what the applicant plans to develop as well. And the request would also help implement the goal of adding more residential rooftops to the north end. Of the notices that were sent out, is there a return of favor or an opposition to the request? And the plan that commissioned by Six Zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This next request is a zone change from C1 light commercial district to PUR plant, PUR planned unit residential district. This is also in Council District Number Two. And the applicant is requesting the zone change to develop 88 single-family homes on this property here. There's a site plan associated with this request. The adjacent properties to the northeast and south are currently undeveloped. The property to the west is currently located in the outside of the city limits in Zone Two of the Tyler ETJ and is currently undeveloped. This request, we're implementing the future land use guide from mixed-use center to single-family medium-low density. The applicant has proposed 88 detached, single-family homes at density of 4.9 units per acre. The proposed setbacks are 25 feet in the front, 15 feet rear yard setback, 5 feet on the sides, and then 10 feet on the corner side yards. All other requirements or stipulate or other standards would be subject to R1B, R1B standards and the Unified Development Code. Of the notices that were sent out, is there a return of favor or an opposition to this request? And the plan that commissioned by Six Zero vote recommended approval.
We do have a card here from Sam Azay. You guys want to ask Sam any questions? Where is Sam?
I don't see him.
Oh, out of you. Y'all want to peg him with any questions? All right, any questions for Kyle?
Second.
Did I do something wrong?
No, I said Sam got off.
He did. Who made the motion? You? You made the second? Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle. R1, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This morning, we, R1 is a request that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution authorizing submission of an application by the Tyler Fire Department for an acceptance of grant funding through the Office of the Texas Governor's Homeland Security Grant Division and for grant funding through the State Homeland Security Program as managed by the East Texas Council of Government to be used to support programs and projects aimed at maintaining and/or enhancing the city of Tyler's emergency preparedness and response capabilities. With all that said, we're applying this year for a mini robot. The full-size robots, they cost somewhere around $400,000. But a lot of the EOD teams, the bomb disposal teams, are using these mini robots. They're a lot smaller, more agile, and they're only about $50,000. So, this will allow us to apply for that and give us further capabilities. We have a borrowed, full-size robot that we had borrowed from another entity, but this will give us a brand-new mini robot that we use most often, easily to transport to and from incidents than the trailer, full-size robot. So, with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Chief?
Move to approve R1.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I should've said, this is a no-match grant, so no matching funds.
We like that.
Thank you.
Back to some more here. This next item is a request that the City Council consider adoption of a resolution or resolutions of support for various affordable tax credit housing projects and the approval of a waiver of development permit fees in the amount of $500 for each awarded project. This, just a little bit of history here. So, this is for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, or TDHCA. Their housing tax credit program is one of the primary means of directing private capital towards the development of affordable rental housing for low-income households. Tax credits are awarded by the state to be eligible to offset a portion of their federal tax liability in exchange for the production of affordable housing. The allocation of tax credits is a very competitive process. Each project receives points for various different items, and one of those is a, some points for a resolution of support from the local government, which would be the city of Tyler for these projects. Four entities are requesting a resolution of support for their individual applications from the city of Tyler that would significantly improve their opportunity to obtain these funds from the state. All proposed developments are targeting either the elderly population or workforce housing needs in Tyler. Providing a resolution in support for affordable housing projects is consistent with the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan goal of providing sufficient housing for households at all income levels and at all stages of the lifecycle. I'm going to go through some of these projects really quick, the proposed applications here. I just wanted to note that while some of these, three of the four would require a zone change to develop the property, so as we, as any approval of a resolution would not negate the need to go through the zone change process later on, and it would not signify or preclude any review of that process. So, approval of the resolution does not necessarily, does not mean approval of the zone change request. So, first application here is the Reserve at Grande. This is located at the south of the intersection of New Copeland Road and East Grande Boulevard. And this is in Council District Number Six. It's currently zoned agricultural. And the proposal is for 84-unit, 55-plus community at this development. You can see here, it's at the south end of this property. The next item is, next project is Cherry Hill Apartments. This is in District Number One. It's currently zoned PMF. It would require a site plan amendment, and the proposals for 60, 60 units at 12 units per acre. Again, south of Cherry Hill and Cumberland Road. Next project is Celebration Tyler in District Number One, currently zoned C1, which would require a zone change. And then it's proposed for 100 units. This would be a senior living, 55-plus community. And then finally, Tyler Park Lofts is the final project that's requesting a resolution and is in Council District Number One. It's currently zoned RMF for multifamily and would not require a zone change. And the proposals for 68 multifamily units. So, at this point, or at this time, it is recommended that the City Council consider resolutions of supports, or resolutions of support for any or all of these projects.
Any questions for Kyle?
Yeah, I've got a question. Kyle, on that first one, the end of New Copeland, I've seen two proposals for that. One is the one that you've got up here, senior living, and I've seen one from that company that was just apartments. When somebody submits this, are they locked into this type of proposal, or can they change it later?
I believe it's contingent. If they are receiving points for the target population, then they are locked into it from the, their funding perspective. But the, as it pertains to zoning or anything like that, that doesn't, age restriction or anything like that is not enforced through zoning.
Yeah, that's my question. You really don't.
Kyle, can you, excuse me, explain the difference between 55 and older and 62 and older for some of the facilities? And what's allowed in 55 and older? You can have younger people also, but in 62 and plus, it's restricted. Can you explain the differences in that?
No. No.
Maybe I should've asked.
Sorry. And maybe somebody here could do that, but usually the, you know, the exception to the Fair Housing Act is, you know, if it's, you know, it can be 55-plus is one thing that, you know, is part of that. But 62-plus, I'm not sure.
Because, yeah, and those would be covenants that would be between the state, I suppose, with Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs on the property. We, as a city, never get involved in age restriction relation, or covenants or, I guess, other issues for facilities. I know the council has before them, just kind of for clarification for action that you have, is you, the council has the ability to give recommendations for one project, and multiple projects, all projects, or no projects. So, really, you have a kind of a wide berth there in regards to what you want to put forward. The next step then would be for these projects, whichever one, if you do give any support through a resolution of support, then they will take that to the state, they will use that, those become additional points as far as, part of the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs point distribution system. And so, gives them an additional leg up, if you will, for possible award of the tax credit projects here with their development.
All right, I've got two cards here. Russ Michaels, wish to come speak? If you'll just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Russ Michaels, and I'm from Houston. I run a company down there as the executive director of Interface, and I also consult in the industry, so I could probably answer some questions if you guys have any. I don't want to take up too much time. I represent Tyler Park Lofts, the developer and the owner on that particular development. That site is actually really great because it's near apartments already, and we're only taking down about five acres, as you can see. And we actually just one modification on that. It's not 68 units, it's actually been dropped to 60 units. We're targeting a family population, not seniors, so it's not age restricted. But the cool thing about that is we can actually target seniors and veterans and families and people of need, and so the market here in Tyler really calls for that. There's 30%, 50%, 60% area median income folks that could actually use a better place. And when you see some of these designs, as you've seen in the past, you know, they're Class A luxury style apartment complexes with all the finishes, all the amenities, and they actually are run really well if you're, if you're a company like us that literally stays with you for 40 or 50 years and runs them and owns them. I wanted to mention something about the covenant that runs with the land. There is a LURA, a land use restriction agreement. I'm an attorney, so I can speak to a little bit of that, that we have to sign up for restrictions that last for 50 years almost, basically, to get the points. And so, what you end up with is if you pick the target population for seniors, that's going to run with the land too. Okay? On this one, there is no restriction for age, but it allows us to capture more folks that are actually in need of housing in this particular demographic, in this particular city. But that's really my presentation to you today. I can answer any questions that you might have. I think that sometimes what I've seen in this industry is that the best way to go about sometimes, when you have a lot of developers in the same census tract, is maybe support all of them so that they can go to the next stage. TDHCA will kind of hash it out. They only allow one deal to go forward in one census tract every year, so you're probably only going to give one development if you support all of them. I can almost say unequivocally that you will only get one. But that's just something that I think you can, you can use as, you know, just some backup if it hasn't been kind of set at this point, so. But that's it. I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Russ Michaels? Thank you. Appreciate you being here. We also have a card here from Darren Smith, if you wish to speak. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Darren Smith, 8506 Cherry Lane, Raleigh, Texas. I'm not an attorney, did a great job. But I have been in the business for about 30 years. And to answer your question, Councilman Curtis, once we declare what our demographic will be, we're locked in. So, we're a 55-plus community, not going to be 84 units, it's going to be more like 70. Construction costs continue to rise. So, there'll be less density on the property. And I have been in contact with pastor buyers of the church next door, and he'd love to have us as a neighbor. So, I just wanted to clarify that we are locked in at that demographic when we submit our application, so it's not that if we can change it.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
City, did you say you're from?
Raleigh, Texas.
Raleigh.
Just right, outside of Dallas.
I know Raleigh.
I'm stuck here today. That's okay, I love it.
Thank you.
No more questions? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Those are the only two cards I have. Is there anybody else out there that did not fill out a card that wishes to speak on this item? Come on up. You'll state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. It's Allen Knoll, 522 Country Lane in Copeland, Texas, also outside of Dallas. So, we have the Celebration Tyler project there. As someone asked a question, we, there are two permissible age restrictions. One is 55 and older, the other 62 and older. We're doing 62 and older. That restricts it, so everyone in the facility has to be over 62. We do a lot of nursing homes and assisted living projects, and what we know is seniors want to live with other seniors. Most of our residents are women as they age, because women live longer, and they really want to be around seniors. So, we think that's very important. If you have a 55 and older community, then kids can live there. You know, only one of the people has to be over 55, so it's a little bit of a, little different story. And as the other folks said, there'll only be one facility granted. One of the things we really like about our site is right on the western side, we back up to the new walking trail, and we think that's just an amazing amenity for seniors. The other senior community, you know, we look very carefully at the road plan. Cumberland Road will be extended through there. I don't know how the new road's going to work on the other deal off of Grande and New Copeland, but I think that's something, you know, we looked at that site also and were worried about the new road coming through there with seniors. So, so I'll have, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Which one is your facility?
It's called Celebration Tyler.
Celebration.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll have some discussion now, but the first thing I'll say is, is, come on up. Name and address for the record.
I'm Jeff Beckler, I'm representing Zerman Properties and Cherry Hill Apartments. This will be 60 units off of Cherry Hill in Cumberland. True multifamily, no age restrictions. Most likely from my goals, you know, we're able to capture much more than just your 55 and up, 62 and up. It really bodes well for capturing more of the Tyler population. It's a great new area, will have great access off Cherry Hill, sits up, sits up really nice. And again, just the site plan amendment, we won't need to go through a rezone from a C1 or anything like that. So, I just wanted my voice to be heard. You guys have heard all of the other details, I won't be redundant, but I just wanted to see you go again and voice support for Cherry Hill.
Any questions? Thank you for being here. You know, it's kind of tough to do this because you got four applicants, you got four projects that really fit different needs and different parts of town. And so, first of all, thank you to all the people that have gone through this process and applied and all that. When we talk about a letter of a resolution of support, several years ago, we did a resolution of support, and we did support all the people that applied. And I believe the year that we did that, that the project went along. And so, what we learned from that is, do we, is there a risk when you support them all? And I think there is a certain amount of risk. You know, if we come here today and we support one project, I think the chances of us getting it here in Tyler are better. I'm not an attorney, but I'm just talking from past experience with this. So, you know, I've had the opportunity of looking at all four projects, and I've met with several other folks, and they all meet, like I said, they all meet different needs. But there's one of them that, I don't even want to look at y'all's facial expressions when I say this, but the one that really meets a need that I see is the one, I don't remember what it's called, it's the one at Cumberland and Old Jacksonville. And...
Celebration Tyler?
Celebration Tyler.
Celebration.
Celebration. And the reason I say that is, is we went down there Saturday, and my wife and I, and we walked the legacy trails for the first time. And we walked down to that corner, and the number of people that are walking the trails, it's amazing. And you see in people's backyards where they've made little makeshift bridges to go from their backyards to the legacy trails. And then you think about this project, people that are 62 and older that'll have access to legacy trails. To me, it just seemed like a natural fit, you know, there's not houses all around, the density looked good. That was just the direction that I went, but I'm just one of seven. So, I'll be more than happy to open it up to anybody that has their individual thoughts.
I don't have an individual thought, but I have a motion, if you'd like me to make a motion. Or if there's any other discussion, I'll hold off on that motion.
Anybody else have any comments first?
Then I move to adopt a resolution of support for the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Project identified as Celebration Tyler off of Cumberland Road, and the approval of the waiver of the development and permit fees in the amount of $500 for that project.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney's. For which project?
Celebration Tyler.
Motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion?
Best of 62 years and older.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Once again, thank you to all the applicants. We appreciate your interest in Tyler and maybe next year. All right, Kimon, Ms. Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Kate Deeds, Director of Utilities. I'm here today to present an award for bid on a consent decree project, our capacity group one, implementation sewer site 7A2, 7B1, and 7B2. So, as opposed to kind of what we've already been working on construction-wise, where we're doing remedial measures, point repairs, stuff on existing lines, repairs to existing lines, this is more of where we're looking at capacity, how much capacity we have in a certain line in a part of the city. So, pipeline analysis... So, pipeline analysis, uh, had to, and L N V had developed a hydraulic model, um, of the collection system where they identified some potential capacity constraints. So, after field, field verification, um, and of those identified potential capacity constraints, they did some data collection, and so then they went out, calibrated, refined the model, and determined the confirmed capacity constraints, um, in the system. So then they developed a, a capacity remedial measures implementation plan. And from that, um, well, here's the schedule for the work that we'll be doing in this capacity remedial measures plan. We've got three groups identified, um, mainly based on proximity, complex, um, complexity of the projects and so on. Um, and in group one, which is the one we're awarding right now, we have four different groups, or four different packages that will go out, and those are going to be bidding through Q three of this year. So, K S A has been doing the engineering on group one, um, they've had a design contract awarded to them February twenty-one. So there are four, four design packages, as I said, and they're also going to be running with the construction phase services on these projects as well. The estimated group one total, uh, construction cost, seven point six million dollars. In this particular project for group one, um, like I said, there are specific sewer sites, seven A two, seven B one, seven B two. So this is the first of the four group one projects. We have one line, line A, about sixteen hundred linear feet of twelve inch gravity sewer line, um, and then line B, which is about forty-two hundred linear feet of twelve inch gravity sewer main, it's going to be installed. The improvements are including the manholes, um, connections to existing sewer lines, pavement repairs, and, and other things that go along with, um, increasing the capacity of those lines. Seal bids were opened on February eighth, um, they were publicly open and read aloud. We have five bidders. Um, the low bidder is J two Construction Services LLC, they're out of Longview, Texas. So, I'm here to, um, ask that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with J two Construction Services LLC in the amount of one million three hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars for the consent decree capacity work group one implementation sewer sites, seven A two, seven B one, and seven B two.
Any questions for Kate?
I do, Kate, I, I know that they, all of the, uh, bidders were vetted, so has J two performed work for the city before?
J two has not performed work for the city before, but K S A is familiar with them. Um, and they've been not only vetted by the city, but also by, vetted by K S A, and it's been recommended that we go with them.
Okay. Right, thank you. But then I move to approve that one.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
M two, Chief.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. Uh, M two is a M O U that we're, uh, asking to be signed, so the request is that the city council consider approval for interlocal agreement with the city of Lindell for the use of the Lindell Fire Training Facility. Um, background on this is our, uh, fire training facility here in the city of Tyler is certified by the state as a, a fire training facility that can host in a, a fire academy, which we currently run a fire academy. Uh, Lindell is not considered a state certified fire academy facility. So it takes this M O U in order for us to be able to use their facility, because our Class A burn building at our, uh, facility has been condemned, it was condemned in January. I am working through the city manager's office to come up with a stopgap, uh, I'll be before you again after we go through a seal bid process for a, a portable unit that will be able to satisfy what we need. But in the, in the meantime, we need to use a different facility so that we'll have something in place. Uh, that stopgap is, is anywhere from ten to fourteen weeks from us making payment for it, so it'll be a little timeout, and our academy may need to use, uh, burn facility prior to that. So this agreement, uh, so no cost agreement, Lindell is allowing us to use it just by handshake, but we need to have it in place so that we can use it, uh, so that our state certification as an academy will go over to their facility as well. So the request that the city council consider approval of the interlocal agreement with the city of Lindell for the use of, of the Lindell Fire Training Facility is, is a request. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, you mentioned in there, um, about the Fire Academy, and I, I want to commend you and your department, because I know that's a, a new academy, something that we haven't had in, uh, over twenty years. Uh, I don't know if the public really knows that, so I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you so much. Uh, the first academy went very well, uh, we, we were way above the state average for the group, a hundred percent graduation, so, uh, we're looking forward to that in, in this class as well.
Thank you.
It's also a credit to the spirit of cooperation and, and working together that we have in East Texas, and so thank you for fostering that also, too.
Thank you, sir.
With that being said, so moved.
All right, got a motion. Motion by McKeller, second by Wynn, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. M three. You're back.
Okay, so this, uh, this next item is a, uh, proposed amendments to the North End Residential Building Incentives Program. Uh, this is a, uh, a program that was adopted back in twenty thirteen, uh, to help incentivize residential infill development in the, uh, the North End Planning Area. And so the, uh, the goal again is to incentivize quality infill development, uh, on previously undeveloped land. Uh, and so the, uh, back in, so it's been updated a couple times over the, the years, uh, back in twenty eighteen, then in twenty twenty, uh, trying to, uh, capture more, or kind of tailor the, the program to, uh, uh, smaller geographic areas and to capture more of the, the infill, uh, uh, type of, of housing that we're, we're seeing in Tyler. And so, uh, just a little bit of the, the highlights here on the, on the program, uh, annually, there's, there's five thousand dollars, uh, set as, set aside for reimbursements for residential, uh, permit fees, uh, for qualifying projects. And then there's also just over thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars in wa- water sewer tap fees, uh, to be waived for those same projects. Uh, we kind of do the math on that, that's about ten home, ten homes every year, uh, that could be eligible for that, uh, depending on the size of the home, but the minimum, uh, eligible home is, uh, thirteen, thirteen hundred square feet, and so, uh, with that number is about ten, ten homes that are eligible. So, uh, back in, uh, so last year, uh, the, there were enough projects to exhaust the, uh, the funding for those, and, and, uh, so those are about ten home, homes, uh, in, in the, the Texas College area. And then this past, uh, this past year, current year as well, uh, there's been four projects that have been accepted into the program. I, I, I don't know the stage that they're at, but the, uh, it's about, just, it's just under two thousand dollars that has been committed towards that, so we're about halfway, uh, through our, our cap there, so, but the year's still, still young, so. Um, and then also just hi- highlight the eligible, or eligibility for the program, so these are for infill residential, uh, developments, uh, limited to, uh, R one A, R one B, R one D, and R two zoning, so, uh, essentially single family detached, uh, homes that are located in, um, certain target areas, which I'll show, and then, that they have to be at least thirteen hundred square feet to qualify. And, uh, and al- and also the development of the property can't have, or development or property can't have any outstanding liens or, or violations. The, uh, so we've got the two existing districts, uh, Texas College District and the Butler College District, so these are the, the two areas that are targeted for, uh, eligible projects, so, uh, if there's a property in this area that qualifies, or that qualifies, uh, based off the size of the home, it can be, uh, you know, considered, considered, considered for the program. I'm here today to talk about some of the, uh, proposed amendments to the, the program here. Uh, one is to add the St. Louis community as a, an eligible target area, uh, so essentially expand the, the geographic area that we, uh, the program serves. Uh, and then also designate all these areas as res- residential improvement areas. Um, and then also to reserve at least fifty percent of the, the funding for nonprofit home builders in our community that, uh, so fifty percent of the funds can be eligible for, uh, or reserved for, for those entities. Um, and then, uh, also just clarify that, uh, once approved into the, the program itself, uh, the departments have to be polled after ninety days, or within ninety days, um, of, of approval, so, uh, if, if a project, you know, some other projects could be available if, uh, if there's issues of, yeah, with, uh, with pulling those permits, so. Um, and so the, the St. Louis area here is, uh, identified, um, by the blue, uh, the blue boundary there, so essentially the southwest, uh, portion of, uh, the loop, or just inside the loop and, and one fifty-five, or Frankston Highway. Um, and so, uh, with that being said, uh, staff, or is recommended by staff to adopt these amendments to the, the, the North End instead of the Residential Building Incentives Program.
So up till now, if, if a developer came in first in line, could he gobble up all the cr- credits?
Yes, yeah. And so right now, it's kind of a first come, first served, uh, basis, and, uh, without any of that, that timeline or timeframe, uh, when you have to, uh, obtain those permits, right now, yeah, it's a first come, first served, so, um, this could probably spread out some of the, the funding throughout the year.
I, I've seen that you've probably had issues of people obtaining the permits, filing for this, and then nothing happens with, with one of the new, with one of the changes that you put in place?
That's correct, yeah.
Kyle, are there specific areas of Texas College, or any area in, in Texas College District?
Uh, any, any area within the identified boundary of the, the Texas College District, which is from the, uh, Texas College Plan? And, uh, so it's that pink or that, that purple color there, uh, everything within there would be eligible.
Has there been requests to add the St. Louis area, that's why, looking to expand it?
Uh, there has, and then also, uh, we have seen a quite bit of, you know, activity or some home building in that area, a deep build lot, so, uh, want to encourage that as well.
So we're talking about increasing probably thirty percent of, uh, adding an additional area to our current approved area? And we're not increasing the funding at all to this?
That's not being proposed, no.
Probably going to run through it faster.
Historically, how many not-for-profit home builders apply for these?
Well, we, um, we did have, we did have inquiries, uh, a couple of years ago about that, and the, the funds were, I guess, dedicated already. Um, but, uh, I don't really have a number on how many, how many they've, how many have been applied for. But, uh, typically, you know, there's a few projects every year that, uh, would probably, would likely be eligible, and so if, if, uh, we kind of set aside or reserve some, some of the, the program for, for those, we think that'd be a good idea.
If fifty percent of the funds are set aside, and, uh, a, a nonprofit home builder doesn't apply for that fifty percent of funds, whether it be one not-for-profit or multiple not-for-profit, and that fifty percent sits there, does it roll over to the next year? And then if it does roll over, does it get combined with the entire funding, where then the fifty percent for people that are for-profit then get bigger chunk than what it was the year before?
Uh, uh, at this time, there's no rollover in, from year to year. Um, I guess if there's a, a desire to try to, you know, at some point, um, uh, use the unutilized fifty percent, uh, for that current fiscal year, that's something that could be clarified or updated in this proposal.
Yes, we'll find out what the demand is from the nonprofit. Does Habitat apply?
Pardon me?
Does Habitat apply for these?
They, they've, they've asked about it, and when they, when they did, there was-
Nothing left.
Yeah, that year.
So is this part of H R nine seventy, the opportunities on, it's not part of that?
No. This is, this is a separate program put together by the city, comes out of the development, I want to make sure that, because funding has been asked a couple of different times. This comes from the Development Services Fund, so that is what is paid for by, um, the development and building, uh, construction fees that, uh, doesn't require any general fund to then go to it. So, all of the development services that we provide are paid for from the Development Services Fund, and so that became the piece of trying to then limit what was the amount of exposure that we had financially on this, thus the, the certain amount that were then provided each year, because for budgeting purposes, of how do we make sure that we keep, as far as not requiring any general fund, uh, essentially property taxes, uh, or sales taxes to subsidize development services, but at the same time have funding that we can start to set aside to encourage development in this area? And so how do you come up with that balance? So that's the reason, Council, every year, is you approve the budget, uh, that is part of then the funding from development services that then is allocated as potential, uh, to go into this program. So Kyle, with our strategic plan, anything on the north side goes towards our strategic plan building, uh, the thousand homes or whatever.
Three thousand homes.
Three thousand homes in, in the strategic plan. So this wouldn't, would not count against our strategic plan? I mean, is, or meet the goals of the strategic plan, this, this, because it's the southwest side of Tyler, correct?
Well, this, yeah.
No, go ahead, Joe.
So, uh, yeah, this, uh, I apologize, uh, I don't have a map for the entire North End planning area, uh, you can kind of see it in that, I guess, that orange color there.
Right.
That's, so this area is general, or this area is in the North End planning area.
So it would be considered in?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, excuse me.
And so, yeah, it is intended to help implement that-
Okay.
-that goal, for sure.
And to your, your point, um, since it's a, a budget item, it's not like we have those funds sitting in a bucket, and if we don't use them, then they're applied to the same amount next year, we just, in, in the budget, show that they weren't used?
Yeah, because you use essentially a zero-based budgeting, almost kind of concept, so that, yeah, each year you're starting fresh on these, um, it's not as though, yeah, those were separate funds that were put aside and then are encumbered for that use, uh, from there on out.
That answers the rollover question.
Any other questions for Kyle? All right, got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kyle. Cassandra, are you going to read this for the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board? Are you, do you have the names of the people that have applied for that?
Yes, sir.
Or maybe I've got them.
So we have, uh, Jake Greenberg, Kristen Bryce-
Not expected.
Patricia Beas, and Amber Phillips.
Gotcha.
And we just have one spot available on that, uh, board that we need to appoint.
All right, we got one, two, three, four people that want to be on this, on this, uh, board, and, and the thing that's interesting is that this is a good board, it's, it's nice to have four people that want to be on it. The bad thing is only one person gets selected, and so we got to figure out who that person's going to be. I know that, uh, Kristen, I know, had been, uh, recommended by the, the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board, and, and primarily because of her attendance to meetings and, and, uh, her volunteerism with, with that board, so that's, that was their recommendation, but I'll definitely entertain.
Yes, I, I'd like to, uh, to offer a motion and, or speak on, uh, Amber Phillips, uh, probably some of you may have seen her featured in last week's newspaper, uh, for being one of the Black Heritage, uh, persons, and for all the work, and her volunteerism and all the work that she's done. She's a very active young lady in the community, uh, I call her- I call her a rising star because even though she doesn't bring attention to herself, she is always out there in the community working hard. So I think that sometimes if we have some of the younger people to bring different ideas to our boards, it will encourage and increase their participation in bringing other younger people to the community. So I'd like to nominate Amber Phillips to that board.
Any other thoughts?
Man, I like what Shirley has to say, but I'm going to probably give sway with the board itself recommending.
Also have a question on, the only application I have in front of me is Ms. Phillips. And it has her choice for the Keep Tyler Beautiful Board as number two. Were there any applicants that fit in as first choice?
The other three put first choice, the other three applicants put first choice.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Dr. McKeller in that I've been contacted by two of the individuals that are also younger that want to get involved in Tyler. And, you know, I suggested to one, try the board route. You know, moved back to Tyler recently. And, you know, how do you get involved? Look at boards, look at ones that maybe fit what you have a passion for as a way to get involved. So I agree that it is nice to get younger folks involved. And we want that so that they understand how our wonderful city works. But also, I had not had a chance to talk to Leanne and ask her what their board recommendation is. They know the folks have been involved and active. So I kind of, you know, lean a little towards them and their thoughts.
Well, and I think what has happened some in the past is that as we do these board selections, we've just individually have thrown in a name because of our own personal experience. And sometimes we have not gone through the vetting process or allowed the board to vet the person to let us know that this person is the most qualified. Not that maybe the best, but most qualified. So sometimes I think maybe we should do a better job of allowing the boards to vet the people because they know, I know we need to vet them as well. But it's hard to, it's hard to, I want to, I want everybody to have their person on there, but there's only room for one.
I think it's very important that, as you said, that we as council members, because we're out there in the community working around these people. And I'm not saying that the board's not as well. But I, this young lady, I've seen her, I've seen her working from the time she was five years of age. And so let me explain why. Her mother, her grandmother is a very active person in the community, Ms. Jean Flowers. And she brought her out to pass out flyers and things even during the time that this young lady was five years of age. She was out there putting out flyers, pushing elections, and just actually being very involved from five years to where she is right now. So I really push her hard to be on this board. Thank you.
Silence. Silence is golden.
It requires a vote.
It does require a vote, and a vote requires a motion.
Who's the person that the board recommended? Kristen with the motion?
Kristen Bryce is who the board had recommended.
Kristen Bryce, make motion to approve Kristen Bryce.
Got a motion? Need a second?
One second.
Got a motion by Curtis, seconded by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So that would be six to one?
I would assume, yes. Yes.
Thank Shirley for your input.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
All right.
Is there a spot on the Neighborhood Revitalization Board? She indicated that is her first choice. I don't know what the status is on that board.
We do not, not at the moment.
Well, and just for, kind of, I guess to make sure for all the council, because Ms. Phillips could come back for not only those two, but for other ones as well. You'll be seeking usually, is it in August?
We started taking appointments in June, or taking applications in June, and we'll appoint them in August, August or September.
Oh, okay, so you'll be taking them in June?
Yes, sir.
Again, for different positions?
Right.
So we can see Ms. Phillips again possibly for different, over their openings?
Yes.
Including Keep Tyler Beautiful, if such ones exist? Okay.
I have a question on that too. I know we've waited way too long, but are those meetings, those meetings are public, right? Anybody can attend?
They are.
Because I like that comment that you had mentioned that the board had said about Kristen, that she's been attending the meetings. And that shows a lot of interest that you really want to be on the board. And I think those people are going to notice that too.
All right. Ready for the consent agenda?
I think you have a card on one of the consent.
Yes, we have C.A. two. We have Lance Phillips that would like to have opportunity to speak.
Lance Phillips?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. And I'm here to discuss the.
Three minutes. I'm sorry, you have three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm here to discuss the possibility of removing the neurotoxin fluoride from the Tyler Pre-Municipal Drinking Water Supply. And to make my point, I offer the following evidence. The FDA classifies fluoride as a drug, not a nutrient. Fluoride is the only chemical added to the water to treat the humans consuming it without any control on dosing and not treat the water itself. Therefore, all of you are guilty of felonies according to the Texas Occupational Code, Section 165, Practicing Medicine Without a License. I have reported this body to the Texas Attorney General's Office for violating the Texas Open Meetings Act, keeping the word "water" off the agenda two weeks ago when you were talking about renovating an elevated tank. It's definitely deceptive, especially since I was in email contact with y'all about the water-related topic before the agenda was ever posted. And that's Section 151 Certified Agenda. The two most common types of fluoride in our water are sodium fluoristic, hydrofluoric acid and silifloride. And they are waste byproducts from the wet scrubbing systems of the fertilizer industry and are classified as hazardous waste. There are 23 human studies and over 100 animal studies linking fluoride to brain damage. Officials encouraging citizens to blindly follow CDC, FDA, and FDA ADA guidance are not questioning the drugs that are being added to the water are negligent to the office since they have failed to keep abreast of the facts. Fluoride accumulates in the body. The highest doses of fluoride are going to bottle-fed babies. Even the American Dental Association, the most ardent institutional proponent, has said that they advise formula should be made with low or no fluoride water. And as the scripture reads in Matthew 18, "It would be better for them to have a large millstone tied around their neck and drown in the depths of the sea than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." I believe it is necessary for all elected officials who took an oath to the Constitution and the laws of the United States investigate facts of fluoridation before making false claims. In fact, there are no benefits of fluoridation. Some of these alleged crimes are malfeasance of public office, misconduct of public office, conspiracy to administer a poisonous substance to cause harm or death, practicing medicine without a license, breach of human rights. So a $10 million bond claim will be filed against the liability insurance policies of each councilperson, city mayor, police chief, city attorney, city manager. Number one, if you don't quit practicing medicine without a license and take immediate vote to quit mass medicating the drinking water with fluoride, if you don't end the deceptive practices and stop violating the Texas Open Meetings Act, number three, provide a public notification through press releases to your constituents in the city stating this newfound evidence that you've all learned today and that it can cause permanent damage, and ask them to come forward with anything that they believe has caused health problems. End all follow PCR testing requirements for city employees. And in conclusion, we demand that you follow through with your oath of office. And this is your notice that you've been served. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for your comments. All right.
And for the record, this item relates to spray parks.
Pardon me?
Pardon, sir. This item relates to spray parks. Do you want to get?
Yeah, go to each individual council member.
Back away, sir.
All right. On the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve it?
I got one question on the consent agenda. And on C.A. four, the police vehicle that was wrecked, if that wreck was caused by an individual, do we seek reimbursement?
We do file a claim on the insurance related to, as far as an accident that is caused by the other party. Yes, sir. And that money is then taken, because we're self-funded, that money is then taken and put into our risk fund for, to pay for claims such as this. Thank you.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Westbrook, seconded by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Managers report.
Mayor and Council, thank y'all. A few items of note, one of which is on the airport and something that our airport director was very excited about. In response to a request for proposals for general aviation development at the Tyler Pounds Regional Airport, Nedwall Properties LLC has presented plans to build a state-of-the-art hangar facilities on the airport property. The proposal requests the opportunity to lease approximately 81,000 square feet of land upon which they intend to build facilities for aircraft storage and associated activities. The lease will be for a period of 20 years with options for renewal for the two additional five-year periods. The Airport Advisory Board with, will review the detailed plans as progress continues. And this long-awaited project has brought closer fruition for the Tyler Aviation Community. So we're very excited about that as far as new addition that will be out there at Tyler Pounds Regional Airport. The second one relates to downtown with the tool design. And y'all approved a contract a couple of meetings ago on tool design. And they'll be in Tyler from April 18th through 22nd to facilitate the process for creating a downtown Tyler design plan. And so during this process, they'll be conducting and gathering feedback from multiple different stakeholder groups, including yourselves. And it'll be an opportunity for the public to submit their comments and suggestions to tool design to take into account as well. Also downtown, our traffic operations is working on replacing the overhead street sign names, name signs that originally installed back in 2011. So there's 15 intersections with a total of 50 signs that have the black and white signs as opposed to the normal green and white signs that you find in other intersections throughout the city. And so these were originally installed to create a unique setting that showcases kind of the city of Tyler that we were founded in 1846. And so they're starting to show their age. So the Sign Shop is busy restoring these, and you'll see those, as well as other work that they're doing on the downtown lights, the traffic signal sign mast, arm poles, the skirting around that, and pedestrian crosswalk areas. And then finally, just kind of a shout out to our fire department. The Texas Commission on Fire Protection recently conducted their annual inspection of our Tyler Fire Department, and they found no violations or issues with the operations or assets of the fire department. No notes of any kind in regards to areas that need a correction or concerns. And so we thank Chief Kobel, the Assistant Chiefs Frost and Hooton, and all of our fire chiefs, our firefighters and drivers, along with their office staff for providing excellence for the citizens of Tyler. Back to you, Mayor.
Any comments for the City Manager before we adjourn? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.